Miss Davis is on her way, St. Columbia. Crockett. Okay. So Franklin. Etherly. And Ms. Ford is on her way.
Uh, this is the city council, regular called city council meeting for August the second, twenty twenty-two. We want to welcome all of those. Okay, JRW carries this broadcast as well as on Zoom. Any other media that may be watching, so we want to welcome our guests here tonight. I have one important announcement for the city and then we'll, we can talk about that later if we want to. This week, the, the city of Helena, West Helena received one point one million dollars. Parker money, Harper is the money that federal government appropriated cities and counties to receive to help deal with the costs and aftermath, although we're still, as your mask can identify, still, still not completely out of the pandemic. We received two allocations last year, we just received our, our, our own allocations for this year. Uh, so Matthew report that and we talked about that later, I just want to make that announcement. We're going to start, we have several guests tonight, we want to start with planning commission appointment. Mr. Amos Eckerson, is he in the audience as requested and invited? The copy of his information was in a previous packet. He's been appointed to the planning commission and the question before you is his confirmation. Mr. Mr. Eric. Well, I'm gonna. City council wants you to introduce yourself, Mr. Eric.
Good evening, my name is Amos Eckerson, I'm here, nice to meet everybody, some of you have met. I'm here to answer any questions. I'm originally from the great state of Nebraska. I found myself in Helena, Arkansas due to a teaching job and fell in love with the place and professionally moved on from teaching to a career in architecture and have completed many projects all over the state, a lot of them here in Helena, including things like the Boys and Girls Club, lots of projects for the Delta Cultural Center. And most recently, I've completed my master's degree in architecture. Where I specialize in urban planning and urban design and actually mine is this project about downtown Helena. And so just wanted to, you know, that's sort of like an interesting project and would like to see it grow and advance and maybe have some more applicability, so I'm offering my services.
Okay. Question for the council will be the confirmation, Mr. Eckerson's appointment to the Helena Sound of Planning Commission. Mr. Eckerson, I mean, thank you, St. Columbia, they made adoption or confirmation of the planning commission appointment, Mr. Eckerson, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Etherly, second is the motion, he had a question about the motion. Not called.
Forward. Crockett. Franklin. St. Columbia. Yes, one.
To serve our planning commission and we appreciate your coming tonight. Next on the agenda, Mr. Thomas Scruggins, if you might as well come forward to introduce yourself. Mr. Scruggins is the candidate for our water and sewer utility general manager position. We've also discussed, discussed this position at length. So I'll ask Mr. Scruggins, you want to state your name and anything you want to say?
It's Thomas Scruggins, uh, of a large family, worked in a mostly central area, started to talk, work around East, South and South, play it brickly. Wrote two children. Three grandchildren, one baby in child. Creditworthy, massive, good. Fast food, water distribution, fast three road treatment. Fast three wastewater options and a hay and diesel.
Thank you, Mr. Scruggins, any questions from the council?
For Scruggins, for the sake of the business, you, you have all the licenses required by both the Department of Health as well as ADQ to run the department?
Yes, sir, that was very fat today. As the issue may not be current because of the backlog of the pandemic and plus they go without medical order, so I don't have any current card, but by record is on file.
Can you tell me what you're asking to possibly, when your parents were taking this position?
I can hear, I'm sure.
When your parents were taking this position?
My parents?
Whether you expect.
Sorry, the mayor and I had already discussed.
Can you state that for the record?
Sixty-eight thousand.
I've been advised the council current base pay is sixty-two thousand, there was negotiations to the mayor and most discussions. And what I advise, I think is we just were probably the cleanest way to do this is look at possibly amending the base pay to sixty-eight to comply with request to the mayor desire and that's where you are, you had a draft of the base pay in your packet reflecting sixty-eight thousand, if you were to so choose to appropriate that. That was a discussion, but it was included in the packet that was delivered to you all on Friday.
Other, other questions of council? It's for.
Also would include some administrative, what, what type of background did you extract from being regarding that?
Regarding his administration, he's been a gentleman manager before of our public utility. You want to talk about what you like to address, your management, administrative experience?
I think Paul for a second. In this, it was contemplated that what you all were discussing was this playing within your heart. You want to get into hiring type questions, if we're going to continue down that line of questions, you'd have to go in the executive session, so you have to be candid and ask all those questions. But you all discussing openly salary, which is fine, because you're getting into all the questions that you normally ask in the interview, then you'd have to go in the executive session and discuss that, which was salary, that's open for public record and itself.
Actually, I asked the mayor and.
I could let right just a little bit, if you don't mind, I'm not trying to interrupt you, I was the pilot works. Director superintendent, manage it over the past fourteen years. That includes water, wastewater, the streets. The animal control.
Excuse me, Mr. Scruggins, could you speak a little, because we're having difficulty hearing you at this end of the table?
You what?
Could you speak up a little, we have difficulty hearing you.
I'm sorry, I'll show that.
Yes, if you're possible, take your mask off to talk, you can feel free to take your mask off to talk.
I was a manager, superintendent of a city for fourteen years. Of the rare wastewater, the streets, animal control. Run inspection, planning, all the code enforcement. And then for seven years, I was manager over a rural system. Also the manager. And I worked for the city of Jacksonville. It's a wastewater plant superintendent of a ten million gallon day plant. And then I've been at a couple of other systems and I've worked part-time in some cities as your code enforcement plus building inspector. I've attended this, you take it candid specifically for water wastewater, but also Fish and State University for maintenance management, water wastewater. And I'm fairly qualified, yes ma'am. I was at the Lawrence Wood for fourteen years.
Now, come up, what was, like, what was the last time that you actually worked as in water?
Oh, in weather, uh, been part-time, uh, well, all the way up to December twenty eighteen. And then I've worked part-time since then.
And I just have one more question about the salary. When you apply, did you apply for this job?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, when you applied for the job, did it not tell you what the salary was?
No, ma'am.
The job didn't list the salary?
Not specifically, no way.
When you survive, when you, when you live in cities?
No, sir, I live in rural area. Correct.
So you say you live in Jacksonville?
I live in Lowak County.
So it's been since twenty eighteen, since you worked in for a water department?
I've worked part-time, she said.
Where?
City of Belogia.
Cool.
Belogia.
Okay. What, what's population size, is it?
Of what?
Population size. If it's ten thousand, yeah, ten thousand people, five thousand.
Third largest rural water system in the state.
So I, I'm, let me see, I, I don't, this one.
I couldn't tell you, they probably got down a thousand meters.
So I have, have they, have you had a tour around and seen, see what we have? I came back to the sewer pump, the pumps and all, you know.
Have a round.
Have they gave you a tour of what we have?
I've gone red, yes, sir, twice.
Can they show you about the pumps that we have there and stuff like that?
Sure.
Have they shown you a poster we're dealing with? What, what our current situation is, right?
Yes.
So do you, you think you can handle that?
If this council is willing, uh, did, I have a problem, so.
Okay. Uh, I see a salary, what you're asking for. Can we negotiate? Can you, can you give us ninety days, can you, can you start in the base state in ninety days? Because we have, I can go higher, I can go higher. Yeah, so we have to negotiate with the mayor, man.
I think it's just, we are, we are, by the, um, advising councils, the governing body of the Helena West Water and Sewer Utility Company. So that you can hear from them directly and ask them questions and we are facing to a half a million dollars in fines because we don't have adequately licensed and certified personnel. And I'm hiring Mr. Scruggins at sixty-eight thousand, which is, if you recall, when I offered following, especially the first time this came up, a public discussion at the council meeting. And he accepted and it would immediately get us into compliance with the Department of Health regulations or on certain cases and losses. In addition, and I don't know if we asked this, that, but the, the, the tank has to be inspected, that inspection is, uh, is scheduled for August the tenth, I believe. So it'd be good to have his services available, he also is acquaintances with Mr. Patterson, who has essentially been filling that role for lack of, of other candidates, I mean, we've opened it in the past and has agreed to work with Mr. Scruggins on, on transition on all those issues, so I just want to remind the council.
Say your city council, uh, Arcsall municipal league has a salary. Right scale in a city of population ten thousand is usually around eighty, eighty-five thousand. So I'm just saying, this is on the lower end of that scale and for experience it goes higher, most people I know that's doing a system anymore are making daddy plus.
We went in this situation. There, we see that, you know, with the water system, you had not fired the current water manager, Mr. Beazey, Collier, so. I don't, I don't think they would be, but the council didn't fire anybody, so you said, we need to know that that's something you need. We're almost here without a current water manager. So those say, we, you fired somebody and that's what got us in this situation here.
And you have the opportunity to overturn that decision, but it's chosen not to, is that true? Is that true?
No, is that, isn't that true? You didn't want to be, so you, so you, this is how you, you want something from me, so in this whole body, so you, you off at a rough start.
Excuse me, I picked it up, dress.
Mr. Mr. Scruggins, just one question for clarity, because I was trying to discern what you said. Are you saying that you were full-time to two thousand eighteen, you were part-time for two thousand eighteen forward? Or did you say that you?
I had full-time, part-time jobs.
But we're talking about water, the question was asked, you get a, a clear answer as to, you were full-time up to two thousand eighteen, is that correct?
Correct.
And you've been part-time since two thousand eighteen?
Sure.
And you've been part-time since two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
For water, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay. I was just trying to clear up the, the point, because I stopped this.
If you cleared it up, my wife passed away in June of eighteen and I probably would have still been working at the same water company, except I'd left the river, chose to buy the bout and, and they were in trouble with the Arcsall Civil, uh, Civil Commission, not the Health Department, they did think it was ruled and whereas later, four months later, I chose not to go contract. And they switched back down, the deal down, their old contract down there because they can't find operator.
Other questions?
I'd just make a comment. When, when we consulted back in two thousand five, two thousand six, oh five, one of the biggest arguments we had that, I first met him was at the college, I knew it was even, one of the biggest arguments we had was the mayor's pay versus the water department's pay, which was Ken Fatise at the time, he was making sixty-eight thousand dollars and we had the two auto managers, one from the east side and one from the west side back then. And regardless of the, who sat at the head of the table, it's been an issue about getting someone to, to come over and take this job at the pay and the sixty-two was just an arbitrary number that was set in the original base pay orders. Um, but it wasn't based on any pretty hard numbers, I mean, a lot of those numbers in the original base pay orders were just arbitrary numbers that were set to, uh, and flexible, but I, I think sixty-eight based on what we know in two thousand twenty-two is not a bad deal for us at all, and so I, I don't, I don't have a problem with sixty-eight.
And this was, the one thing, we had two systems, two water managers at that time, sixty-eight and forty-eight. So at the time that we saw that, we were paying a hundred and sixteen thousand between the two.
Other questions or comments from Mr. Scruggins? Thank you, Mr. Scruggins.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate you driving over tonight.
At, at this point, for, uh, two things that are on the table. The mayor presented him as a candidate. And you all have the right to overturn if you, if you so choose, but that's not the primary issue that we're discussing today. The issue is, uh, the mayor has requested that base pay be amended to sixty-eight thousand dollars, so he can have the beginning salary of sixty-eight thousand dollars. The, the practical issues that we discussed, uh, a month ago or two weeks ago, three weeks ago, how long we discussed this is, uh, the Department of Health came and made a presentation, where they've been communicating with the mayor for the past three years and the city has a possibility to have five hundred thousand dollars in fines, but not have all the licensed personnel for the water department. This is the beginning of trying to get people in place for the water utility. And I believe that we need three or four other people like him in the water department in addition to him. At this point, for that to be practically happening, the city council had to amend the base pay and go forward if that's what you also choose, and then the mayor will be authorized to hire him at the sixty-eight thousand at that point.
St. Columbia.
So Mr. Frank, Mr. Franklin, are you moving to place?
We need to make, we need to very increase base pay amount, so we can move there over to the.
Yes, sir, at this, at this rate, you do not have an ordinance to authorize in the beginning, any higher than sixty-two thousand dollars. Yes. Once you do the base pay ordinance, then the salary becomes sixty-eight thousand to begin.
Okay, so what do we need to know, make a motion to that effect?
I'm not sure what Mr. Franklin is about to move, but he's about to make a motion.
Yes, so you, so you're moving the place on third as final reading, reading the title on spin the rules. Madam, what ordinance number is this?
Twenty-five.
Ordinance number twenty-five, base pay ordinance, amend the salary of the water utility manager to sixty-eight thousand dollars in the base pay.
Okay, there's been a motion in a second. Question, any questions or comments about the motion, if not, call room.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Crockett.
Base pay ordinance.
Ford.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Davis. Franklin.
Ordinance number twenty-five, that's twenty twenty-two, an ordinance to fix the number and base pay of full-time employees, delay the fishing for and to amend all process ordinances for other related purpose, there needs to be a motion adopt.
Mr. Franklin moves adoption and St. Columbia seconds the motion, any questions or comments about the motion, if not, call room.
Davis. Forward.
Yeah.
St. Columbia.
Yeah.
Franklin. Yes. Crockett. Six yes.
Yes, that's a motion clause in the witness.
Mr. Mr. Franklin moves adoption, emergency clause. Ordinance twenty-five, twenty-two, Mr. Franklin, let me say this motion, questions, comments about the motion. Mr. Scruggins, you have a question? It sounds like you have a question, a question.
You can even talk a question, so why don't you make a?
Not, it's not called.
Franklin. Davis. Etherly.
Yes.
Ford. Crockett. St. Columbia.
Yeah.
Six yes.
All right, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Scruggins, again, looking forward to work with you, we got a lot of work to do, that's for sure, thank you, yeah. All right, the next item on the agenda, Mr. Edward requests that we discuss Kentucky Street, Mr. Edward, you recommend us?
The, um, the Kentucky Street issue, just to tell you that came out, I was at Walmart and I had a lady who walked up to me and told me she had an issue on Kentucky Street. I immediately would text Ms. Ramsey to put her on the agenda, so I wouldn't forget is what happened, and so that's how that ended up being on the agenda. But her question was about burned-out structures and overgrown lots in the Kentucky Street area. I directed her, during that conversation to, uh, code enforcement. And she said that she had had some conversation with you, I did not know the lady's name. And she said she'd had some conversation with you, that she sent her, you may remember this, so you sent a long text message, something about get the council together or something, I, I didn't know what that was about, but I put it on here just so that, um, I didn't want it to fall through the cracks. I did drive through there, I saw one overgrown house, I think it was six fifty-five Kentucky. I didn't see any burned-out structures, but I don't know if I was on the wrong internet or not. It's, it's another, okay. I, I was trying to make sure, but anyway, I didn't know really where the code enforcement as far as, is addressing those issues of overgrown license. I just didn't want it to fall through the cracks, so I just needed to send this, send this Ramsey text and I said, be placed on there again, so. I wanted her to know that, um, to, 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 you know, to the table, but just if we can, you can give us some reporting perhaps on where code enforcement is as far as addressing these.
The, uh, we have two co-positions that are open, being advertised. The most recent code enforcement officer did a really good job of updating our computer software system on code. The, I think I'm familiar with the property you're talking about on Kentucky Street, there's some trees down too, maybe, I'm thinking, but there's also a water leak over there, as far as.
There was a big hole in, in the curb, Kentucky and.
We've, we've had, we've had quite a bit of water leaks in Kentucky and that whole area over there, but, uh, we, uh, we, we've advertised for the co-position. Positions, uh, we, we need a co-position field to pick up the ball where she left. And, um, so that's where code enforcement is, as far as the position. Uh, so we're, we're, and so anybody that sees this, you go to our website, hwhir.gov and you can see applications on there. Feel free to, to fill those out and submit them to the office. She did do a good job of, of getting our software updated, which was one of the main traits, characteristics that she had when we hired her. I'm not sure that specific property is in there or not, so I'd have to get the address and find out the owner. Specifically on, on a burn, on a burned down property or other properties. There's a street in between, uh, streets over there that's, I guess the city abandoned or, uh, took out of the city system years ago, I don't, I went here, I don't remember why, I'm not sure where. And it's, it, you know, it's, it's always, uh, sort of a den, it's, it's a cut-through place, people cut through. Yeah. And it's, uh, I've, I've been told it was taken out of the city system. Uh, but if it has, it needs to be either blocked off, I was told it hadn't been because so many people like to use it to cut through, but the, uh, that area is, is, ma'am. It's before you get to the bridge.
That's channeling the drive, that's still a neighborhood, what has happened is, it, it's still a street. No houses there, the, the, the house is, is a concrete block where the, where the owner just had the houses took, took down, but nobody had cut through. There's a ditch that the city has not been taking care of the last four years, has not been taking care. When, when Mayor Holloway was here, he had, he, the council voted to get the bridge fixed, but we, they always went through and cut the edge of it, it had not been cut. Uh, that's one of the, I'm in favor of you buying a good code enforcement officer, because that would also have that, that, that neighborhood looks horrible. Uh, you know, we, you know, we, we paid five thousand dollars to have folks. Uh, excuse me, we have, we paid five thousand dollars for us to cut the river park, it's some of these neighborhoods, Ms. Davis has been advocating in her neighborhood and I ain't seen nobody on the lower more attractive that could, nothing over there, but you know, that's neither here nor there, but that is center of the drive, but it's still a street. You can't take a street out of, like that, man, I'm sorry.
Well, that, that's, that's what, that's what my department is telling me, as far as empty lots and, and grass, the street department. Well, that, that's, that's what, that's what my department is telling me. As far as empty lots and, and grass, the street department. Or the public works department has been chiefly working on those issues. The, the truth is trying to get the city's property alone, cut in a timely manner. Uh, and at the same time, keep up the private lots has been, been challenging. There are more private lots developed every year. Um, so two things have to happen. The, the lot, the owner of the lot has to be. Note legally, has to be notified of the condition of the property and told what will happen if they don't get it in order. Uh, the street department, if they don't, can cut it and then charge and then place a lien on the property. Uh, the, so it's the street department working with a code officer mostly, and then with the city attorney's office. Um, I, yeah, I think the, the, it's an overwhelming, the truth is, it's an overwhelming effort here. Last year, along, we lost over a hundred homes to fires. Um, at, at that rate, uh, you're gonna get more dilapidated structures, more abandoned houses, more abandoned lots. And uh, the, the system we have to keep up with that, and this is not a new issue, and y'all have addressed it before. Uh, long before I was even here. It's been a longstanding issue, but it, it needs to be addressed. Um, Mr. Erickson, he's already left, actually brings that skill set to the planning commission. He's got a lot of experience and he helped us. Get a nonprofit uh, foundation to help us on those issues, but we couldn't. Now, they said they couldn't get any, any cooperation out of the city on those things, and so they. They withdrew their offer to help the city advise us on changing our codes and making our process better. Um, it's a serious problem. There's no question about it, and it has been for some time. Uh, as long as our city is declining in population, as long as people can. Set fires and uh, at will, and we lose the kind of houses, houses to arson and fires as we do every year. Uh, it's gonna be extremely difficult, if not impossible task, between the, the public works department, the code department. Legal department, the lien process, going to take them to court. All of those issues, if they refuse to, to participate, um, delay. And might be extremely difficult, and that's if all of those things are, are hitting on all fires and they, and, and they don't. Uh, so. Uh, all I can tell you is, it's, it's, it's a very frustrating thing. The privately-owned empty lots, uh, we do them. And we try to place liens on the property if they don't pay them. Um, I miss, Mr. Valley might want to help with that. But one, you know, I bring this up before, one, one sticking point with me is, we've been trying to clean up West Side for a long time. It's a, it's a cesspool of problems in that whole area of the city. One of the things that uh, that I, it was a cesspool four years ago, and so many people talked to me about it and for. For three and a half years, we've been trying to get that property cleaned up, and it's still in court, it's still being um. Not delayed, what's it called? When you, we put it off an, an extra month because the defendant doesn't appear. Um, it's, it's a very long and it's private property. And in America, whenever you're dealing with private property, you have laws and regulations and people's rights that you have to contend with. Um, and that's mostly a good thing, but it can also be a difficult thing if you're a city trying to clean up private property. Just, I use West Side as an example because it's such a well-known example of blight that should have been cleaned up years ago. And we are stuck. We're stuck in court waiting for some judgment out of court before we can act. Um, that, that's, I mean, that's something that we should review for the whole city. All together without, I mean, listen, I, I'm not wagging fingers at you. I'm saying that this has been a problem at least for, at least for the last ten to twenty years. I'm a citizen, I'm a citizen here. I've seen it. It, it grows increasingly worse. And it, and that's because of our economy, because we've lost population, because people use insurance as a way to make money. Uh, there are all kinds of reasons for it. I've seen it as an insurance agent, long before I was, I was mayor. It's a serious problem. It needs to be dealt with, uh, I think, more directly, more seriously as a city, by all of us, so. Having said that, we've done an awful lot of private lots. Uh, but we, we also have state highways that, you know, people don't realize they're state highways. We have a lot of state highways in this city that the state maintenance crews are supposed to keep up. They struggle. Just like we do with keeping people on staff, with the equipment, maintenance and costs and all those kinds of issues. So it is, it is a definite struggle, and we all, state included, ought to be investing more in maintenance. And this is a good example, love it. So, I mean, that'd be my comment, but it's, the, the short answer is, uh, we've got both co-positions open. Uh, it's been uh, it's been a, a long process trying to uh, keep a good, healthy code department. We might want to look at how much we pay the code enforcements we had. Before I was mayor, there was one good, really good code enforcement officer, and I think he moved on to Granger Pastures in Washington or, or somewhere. Um, he had all qualifications, he's exactly what you wanted, but, but we couldn't pay or compete with Washington D.C. Um, and we couldn't keep him. So we might want to review the whole, the whole thing from stem to stern would be my recommend, would be my recommendation. I don't have to answer your question, but uh, specifically, Mr. Ethely, if she would, she would reach out to me again, or you tell me after the meeting, the address and the name. That the person will follow up with you and with her.
Well, Mr. Mr. Ethely, and also in addition, as you're well aware, the whole system starts with code enforcement and the sanitation department working together. I, city attorney can't put a lien on any property till I have a bill for everything that the city has done. I currently have zero on my desk. I currently have zero for the past year, two, three, however many years, to place liens on people's property. Part of the issue, part of the issue is, uh, there has to be greater communication and effort working together to. Uh, I've met individually with uh, s- street sanitation, now public works. I've met individually with code enforcement. I may collect it with both and go on through the responsibilities and what I need a city attorney to go forward. And part of it is, every time somebody goes out to cut a lot, we're supposed to keep up with how much it costs to cut, cut the lot, how many man-hours, et cetera. So that, so that then we can come to the lien process, and until I receive that type of information, then we won't be able to go forward. As relates to, as relates to it, because whether they pay or not is not the issue, because. What we would do is bill for the fact that we're doing the work, uh, because they have a duty to maintain their property. The other issue is related to West Side, uh, there's currently a warrant for individual for West Side School. Uh, we've tried to try the case, there was a, of a plea of guilty, the, the court reviewed it. And the court was ordering them to clean it up and has ordered to clean it up, but they haven't done anything. The other thing is on West, West, West Side, we were waiting, uh, the last meeting I had with the previous code enforcement officer, uh, meeting. We were waiting so we could do the condemnation ordinance, but thereafter, uh, whatever circumstances arose where she separated herself from the city. Uh, we did, that ordinance has not been presented to you all, and uh. Once I get those documents back from the code enforcement officers, we can go forward with that. We had discussed with her on that and five or six other pieces of property. I stand ready to prosecute whatever's brought to me. I prosecute all the misdemeanors they bring to me. I prosecute all of the cases that are brought to me. If someone wants, if, once the departments bring me the information, I'll gladly bring forth a lien and whatever corrective action that we need. But until I get it from the coordination of those two departments, my hands are tied. Uh, I look at every street in this city and there's, there's uh. Most neighborhoods, there is a dilapidated house on one or two streets, regardless of where you live and what area of the city. Uh, we're all not that far from a house that needs to be torn down, and so I look forward to working with everyone to, to eradicate these issues. Now, the other issue we have to run into, and we've discussed with it many times, the Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, or A D Q as we call them. Uh, you can only tear down one house in one block per year. The rule of one, 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 one house, one block per year. And so you may have four or five houses on the block that need to be torn down, but you had to choose which one, and it'll take you five years to tear down all the house on. One block, if you have five on one block. But uh, those are issued, they're, they're regulations. They also impose regulations where they're keeping up with asbestos, that we have to have asbestos report. Uh, the mayor's been frustrated with that very issue because the issue uh, is before we could tear it down, you had to have an asbestos in, asbestos inspection. Have someone that's trained to do it, and A D Q has approved it, before we go for a tear it down. So the process is slowed down by that as well. The mayor did mention that, but that is an issue that is a, a problem with, excuse me, every city, the asbestos. And so those are things that we're looking forward to working through, uh, but we will work with A D Q and any other entity. Uh, hopefully, you all can look also at the salaries of code enforcement that currently base pay thirty and twenty-eight. Uh, the base pay, you have a supervisor that's thirty and one twenty-eight. In the budget, I believe you have a thirty thousand, a twenty-eight thousand in the budget. I don't think you have all three in the budget, but in the base pay, you have three positions.
Yeah, I, I agree with this valley. I, I, the other thing I point out is, we, we desperately need a fire marshal. Who has, as our fire chiefs have reportedly, and our police chiefs have reportedly. Uh, recommended because they have the legal authority and the training to do something about investigative work. That can't have a bearing in court on arson. We've had a serious problem with arson here for many, many years. Uh, when I first became mayor, I called the fire chief in my office and I said, what can we do about arson? And the response was, it's, so we have a, a, a fire marshal who's got the license training, and both, you have to have license and training in both police department and fire department. To, to be a fire marshal, to do legal investigative work on fires that can be presented in court. We're not gonna be able to do anything, and since that time, we've been trying to get a fire marshal position. I would urge you, encourage you, as long as we have the kind of arsons that we do in this town, it's gonna be very difficult for even the best codes. And code enforcement officers and all the rest that we talked about, uh, to catch up. Uh, it's, it's absolutely unbelievable to me how many houses burn down in a year in this town. Uh, there is an outbreak, a uh, uh, very se- serious problem with arson here. Uh, we recently reached out to the federal government to help us with some of the cases that we are familiar with on the police department side. Um, but as you might imagine, getting the federal government to work on every single fire is, it might be arson. Uh, and, and they don't have the inspectors either. There's a state fire marshal, but they only come in when there's a dead body. We've only had one of those since I've been mayor. Um, and so most of these don't involve a body, but they do involve physical destruction. And the owners uh, often don't use, if they have insurance money, they don't use that, they're not required to use that money to clean up the property. Um, and often they don't, and they leave it in that state. Um, and sometimes when we send them letters to tell them that we have to clean it up. Um, the first, I think this was Dallas Smith, he was doing it. She sent those letters out not long after I became mayor. And the fire chief came in my office and said, we had five fires over the weekends. Every one of them received one of your letters, mayor. Can you stop sending out those letters? Because their answer to cleaning up their property was to burn it the rest of the way down. And they hired somebody, I'm not saying they did for sure, but that was the suggestion in, in his comments. So a fire marshal, I'm just gonna reiterate. Secondly, y'all have approved and, and, and for three years. I've worked on with HUD to knock down the blighted property for the Helena Housing Authority property in Helena. Uh, West Helena's property is next on the list. That's scheduled to start September. Uh, that's awaiting approval on all the asbestos uh, and other issues. They've, they've passed those. Uh, inspections and requirements, but it's literally sitting on a desk in Chicago waiting to be signed uh, by HUD so that we can proceed. Uh, I hope in September with some of the blighted properties, um, and the city will be paid for that. Uh, so as you know, so I'm hoping we generate enough income there to help bolster our, our other code enforcement and blighted property issues.
And that's one other issue I want to say, just the frustration. But one of the issues I just want to say, one other problem that we had is a major problem that many of you are not aware of, and I hadn't briefed you on it before. Because these properties burned, the owners sell them for little or nothing. They sell them five hundred or a thousand dollars, and then soon as we send them a letter, that person sells it to another person. And so we had uh, probably about ten to twelve properties that the former code enforcement officer have kept me posted on every time we send a letter. Next thing we know, the property was sold, so they're changing hands quickly, uh, because instead of them trying to repair the properties. The profit margin still, they can, they can make them a quick five hundred dollars, quick thousand dollars, so they do so and, and give it to another person. And then they're out of the loop, we had to contact another person. So that's one of the issues we're having too.
All right, I'll be quiet. Any other questions about Kentucky, Kentucky Street was, we're kind of turned it into Ms. Crockett and then Ms. Stives?
Well, um, my question, my hand was up. You, you recognize when I want to, you want to talk, but when I was trying to talk, you paid no attention, but anyway.
I didn't see, I apologize. I didn't, I didn't see that you.
You don't think that it was. In the words of this, feasible for you to let. It be known that we no longer had a code enforcement, because just recently as yesterday. I was talking to someone who was trying to get in touch, and I didn't know we didn't have one, so I referred to the code enforcement. You know, stuff like that, it, you don't think that that would have been something that we should have known?
Well, it was on the agenda, I think, the last regular meeting we didn't get to. Ms. Davis wasn't here, I was gonna bring it up then. It had just, it had just happened, and it's, it's not a situation where, uh, let me answer her question. It's not a situation where the employee um, left, and it was, it was, it had to do with violations of the. Yeah, um, in sick policy and, and leave, and, and so I'm, I don't want to go into the details of that. But, but it took, but it took some time to resolve that issue, uh, to make sure. I'd have to look, but it hadn't been very long, that's all I can tell you.
So did she get paid last time period?
We'd have to look that up.
She get, no, Ms. Ms. Ramsey's saying she did, she did. All I'm saying is, I'm not saying that you had, say, where we getting rid of the code enforcement such and such thing. You just could have said, we no longer have a code enforcement, so if there's any questions that need to be, so that we could direct them to say. That's the whole problem with this situation. You feel like if you tell us something as simple as that. That you uh, betraying somebody, don't, that you, you, you don't, you don't think that's something that we should know?
Didn't I just tell you? Didn't I just tell you?
Okay, but she been gone three weeks!
I just told you that.
She been gone three weeks.
And I think the reason we had that conversation is because Mr. Ethely put uh, Kentucky Street on the agenda. Other than that, I don't think it would have been on that. And I apologize for uh, jumping in, but everybody knows that I harp on. The structures and the overgrown lots, but we agreed over a month ago. And Ms. Ford brought it up, well, we talked about it, Ms. Ford brought it up, that we would have on each agenda. About code, about the houses, burnt-out structures, houses and the grass. And the last meeting I was at, no, I wasn't at the last meeting, but the last meeting I was at, it was, Ms. Davis was leading this conversation. And it was something about the grass. That's not how we, that's not what we, we agreed to. We agreed to. It started at the head of the table, and we all have a, a conversation or discussion, and I think we talked about ten minutes or fifteen minutes as a part of our meeting, each meeting. Am I right?
And, and I, and we did generate a code enforcement report. I think it was monthly was the, was, was what we saw. And it was generated monthly until the person in question. No longer was employed, so when we employ a new, when we employ a new code enforcement officer, we'll pick those monthly reports up.
I only received a couple of those, those were well, but that's not a discussion to me.
But, but those were generated after your request. I'm not sure how long ago you're, you made that request. But they were generated and I reviewed them monthly and y'all got them.
You reviewed them with who?
With the code enforcement officer, and, and they were putting, they were sent out to you as you requested and so forth. She's no longer employed, so that report was, hasn't been generated since she left. Hasn't been that long ago, I hope, uh, who are, and I don't know, we just posted it, I don't know who the next code enforcement officers would be, but when they. Are placed, that'll be one of the requirements of the job, to pick up where she left off on those reports.
Cause I just talked to someone this afternoon, and it's probably akin to this, I refer him to the code enforcement officer. Do we have anyone on staff providing animal control services, part-time, occasional? Cause I, I'm having, we have a problem in war one.
Would you like to go ahead? Would you like to go ahead and, well, actually. Word Avenue was next on the agenda. I was going to see if y'all want to take a, the issue on, is it Miller Street?
Did you get my little note?
Yeah, I've got, I was gonna, if we done this and, and this, Mr. Franklin's issue, I was gonna ask council if it'd be all right to go ahead and.
If we can put it on the next.
Been the same area, Ms. Davis was trying to finish.
But I want to ask the mayor, uh, did he ever find out any information about? Hawkins and Mooney? What I emailed you about, I mean, text you about over the weekend?
I was told they fixed the leak yesterday, what I was told, or they went over to fix the leak. And then once the leak is fixed and it's, it's dry, then the street department will have to go over and did the pothole. Use the pothole machine to fix the, the road. So, but yes, ma'am, uh, the report I got on it yesterday was, uh, I, I think they went south ninth street. And then they went over there to fix that leak. I don't know if they've completed that repair or not. They, they had two other emergencies a day created in part by the utility work that was being done on Oakland Avenue. So I don't know if they've completed it, but they did, they told me they were going over there yesterday. Uh, yesterday was Monday, right?
They don't want to go today.
Okay.
But you just said something that uh, after the water department finishes, then the street department is supposed to fill, fill the holes?
Once there's, I mean, they can't do it where there's water.
I'm staying there, but I'm hearing from the street department that that's the water department's responsibility. Because there are several holes that have been left after the water has been fixed. The hole has been fixed or the leak has been fixed, but the holes are still there. So is it the water company's responsibility to repair the hole, fix the hole, or is it the street department?
Well, the, the true answer is it's the city's responsibility. So the water departments, what the water department normally does is fill it up with rock. Uh, to lessen the impact of the pothole. And then now that we have a pothole machine, if it's asphalt that's required, if it's not a cement or concrete road repair. Then they're going to, then the street department would come in and try to repair the, a lot of our potholes are originally water leaks. That's how we get them. So, uh, so it's really both and it's not either or. That's the answer.
The chick, also chick elm.
I will, elm?
Mm-hmm, it's a big hole. No, cause I went there through there yesterday. No, it's got the, those four long sticks in the middle row and holes this big. Yep. It wasn't fixed, well, it wasn't fixed yesterday. Okay, that's all I had.
Ms. Crockett.
Yeah, I just want to know, uh, we have some guests here who have a request. So how did they get it to bottom? I thought we were putting our guests at the top of the agenda.
That's what I wanted to. Are you talking about Word Avenue?
No, I'm talking about Ms. Rebecca Johnson.
I, I don't know. I didn't do.
So can we move them up and go?
Well, we also, we also have people, we, we.
Well, I'm just, I'm talking about after the five thirty three wars.
Yes, yes, ma'am, and Ms. Ford, if it's all right, we can, we. I know, I know, but she's asking for y'all to discuss it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask her, ask you on her behalf. Uh, so if, if we're done, if we're done with Kentucky street, this, Mr. Franklin. Are we done with Kentucky street? Can we move on? All right, Mr. Franklin, you recognized for Word Avenue and we have some guests here tonight.
This is Covington, I like to, this Covington, you come up to uh, talk about, oh, Word Avenue. I brought this to your attention before and it's gotten worse and nothing has been done. She knows a lot more than I do.
Ms. Covington, state, state your name and anything else you want to say.
Okay, I'm Cheryl Covington. I'm on, I'm here on behalf of my mother, Barbara Raider and her spouse, uh, my dad, Lee Raider. And what's going on is uh, my mom bought a home in nineteen ninety-three on Word Avenue. And so I have some paperwork if I can give that to the council, is that okay? So what has happened over the course from ninety-three to twenty fifteen is when the problem began. So in twenty fifteen, the Helena West Helena School District began construction at the JF wall site, which is the new Aliza Miller building. Um, during that time, they routed the water to the back of JF wall, which has flooded my mom's street for, um, I would say seven years now. So she's been going back and forth with the superintendent, uh, previous mayors, the current mayor, city council persons. And you'll see all that listed there, a timeline where it shows all of the people, even the water department, center point, energy, customer service. I mean, just ongoing. And she has received no response or no rectification of the matter, um, to date. And so she relocated, um, she inherited a home at five thirty-three Word, which was right down the street. So I also have pictures that show the state of the street prior to the JF wall construction. And the current state, which are pictures that were obtained from Google map as well as photos that I took on. So first photo, so what it looked like prior to. And then the second set of photos showed, um, just some patchwork that has been done by several, um, individuals that have come to the address. And appraised the property, tried to look at and just put a Band-Aid on it. So it's actually eroding her yard. Um, there is a health, um, issue that has persisted due to mosquitoes and snakes. Um, piping is exposed from center point energy as well as her pipes. And now it's at the process that it gets to be a brisk cool day, her pipes are freezing. Like if we get not a cold winter, so it's, this problem has persisted. They're trapped back there and so it's a concern of mine as well as my sibling. That the city has overlooked this street regardless of how many houses are back there. This is still a street that is a concern of ours and hers as well, because they currently live there. So, um, I asked to be placed on the agenda in an effort and hope to get this problem rectified. Yes, you, yes, you can see that on the pictures. Um, Center Points pipe is the orange reddish pipe. The pipes to her house is the white one. And, um, as I said, it's just, it's, it's ridiculous, the amount of water that is pouring there, uh, when rain, when it rains.
Thought we, uh, had a discussion about this before, about the water coming out of that hill. That was in that, in the refills, the water coming out of here from JF wall. It's, it's actually what going down into what they call Millenite. From that new addition of jail wall. And we've had this before. And I thought they, we voted to do something about that. I had to hear that, Ms. Uh, Ms. Terrell.
But people have been coming there, but no one has done anything. So there's, it seems like a passing of the bulk here. And so we're, we're wanting answers and a solution, uh, if possible, and for this to be rectified. And you know, a sufficient amount of time this quick.
First of all, I want to tell you, you're so nice. All of this is excellent. Your presentation was good and I agree with all of it. Um, I'm very familiar with Word Avenue and, and the only thing I would say is, I don't, I don't think you can argue that I haven't been responsive or returned her calls. The, the problem, I mean, you, I can't really add anything you said. You did, you did an excellent job of explaining it. Um, and we had some ditch work done down there to try and help with the water. Apparently that hasn't, that hasn't done enough to, to, to deal with the water situation created by the JF wall. Uh, issue that you were talking about. Um, we did some asphalt work down there. Apparently that wasn't, that wasn't enough either. So I did not know until tonight, um, that it, that it wasn't doing the job. But I'm glad, very glad that you came, very glad that you brought to my attention. Um, and again, you did, you did an excellent job and I'm, I'm open to any suggestions from, from you or the council.
Uh, Ms. Ms. Covington, do you have any images that reflect this property in relation to the JF wall and Aliza Miller building?
Um, can you restate that?
Do you have any images reflect this property in relation to the JF wall and Aliza Miller, uh, building?
Well, the first set of photos was prior to, and then the second set was after. So you're saying how that area looks? Well, it's very wooded in that area. So I was showing you on those photos that that property sits across the street from that. And that water flow does come down unto that property.
Okay, so the wall property would be in front of that?
Yes, so five twenty-one, which was the previous home would be directly across the street. When we were children, we used to walk that trail to JF wall. So she has moved to five thirty-three, which is two lots in between, or one and a half lots in between where she currently resides. Which is the second set of photos that's going around.
Ms. Covington, part of my questions is for the purpose of the listener and the viewing artists so they get a picture of.
Yes.
Where is this property in relation to it? And we're looking at pictures, but no one else can see the pictures. As it relates to as well, I, I believe that the school district has a large part to, to do with this. Um, I would suggest that, that the city look at what the city could do on this portion, but also. Uh, I will contact the, the school district regarding this property. Because they cannot. Cause when they correct their property, they cause an issue on someone else's property. They need to eradicate the issue on their property, which is causing damages to the other person's property. School district is clearly the owner of that property. They are causing substantial damages to the properties that's below and across the street. Uh, there needs to be some additional drainage issue that's the district needs to do to divert the water from. Um, coming directly down and to, uh, some other way to, to get the water fixed. Uh, but it looks like a major issue and looking at the pictures that you presented to the body tonight. Uh, but with them being the, the landowner, if I own my property, do something that causes damage to your property. That I am responsible for the damages I've caused on your property. And this is a continuing damage that's, that's being done by the Helena West on the school district. Uh, because when they moved the property, that probably was not, uh, that's probably one, one of the issue that would. Fully addressed as far as to their drainage and how it affected those downhill, uh, relating to it. But that's something that needs to be addressed at this point, uh, because there are some serious damages it appears.
Ms. Val, you kind of raised an interesting point. So mitigation as a result of the work that the school district did. Is that something that the city, did you say you were going to contact the school district?
Yes.
Okay, is that kind of a legal issue? Cause it's not just their homes, it's also the cities, you know, the ditches in the roads and all that.
Yes.
If I can add, we have, well, my mother has spoken with prior administration. As you all know, that, um, offices change a lot. And so that's on the agenda, that's priority. And then when someone moves out, such as a superintendent or the mayor, then it's no longer a priority and we're back at this, this, in this position. So they have come in and put asphalt down, which is broken off and that's shown on the pictures. And that asphalt is breaking off and hitting the pipes. And if that's a gas line there, then that's a bigger problem for me. So I'm wanting to know what direction and how can we be assisted in getting this, this rectified?
One of the questions I had, uh, relating to, when you said they put down, uh, asphalt, who the they that you, you're saying? Was it the city or was it the, the school district?
It was trying to divert the water all the way down the road that was coming down.
Was it Griffin Construction Company?
I have no idea.
I think it was Griffin, did they ring a bell?
This, uh, I got a picture, Ms. Ms. Ready to talk, uh, this is May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one at eight sixteen AM. This is sewer water right here. I got several pictures made like where the sewer water is running right up, right up front of her driveway. Uh, I got pictures of it, the, the, these are clear pictures of the line. This is the water line and this exposed. I talked to you about this last year. Uh, th- there it is again, where she's standing right there, it's sewer water just right there. She's standing by it on, on her driveway. So there's another, that sewer water right there, the pipe just fell off.
Do you have a strong smell of sewage, you have sewage? Leak over there?
But it's, it, the yard is actually, I mean, each time it rains, you can see that washing away. And so they've had to get gutters as well as like it's just moving up into the yard. You know, you can see the progression of that happening.
And I've been up there, I couldn't even tell you how many times I've driven down Word Avenue and had to find a way to turn around at the end of it where all that is. Um, the project that we did there, it sounds like to me. Um, what work they did do has washed out. And it's now eating back into the asphalt again, just like it did before. So that the ditching work that was done there, uh, it, it may have alleviated it for a while, but it sounds like, is that what's happened? It, it, did it cave back off in there again and just do the whole thing all over again?
What's happening now, that water is coming off the hill and the school. And it comes down so, so fast and full. And it's coming right down the road. It's coming outside and it's getting draining side on the outside. That's the part that it's running that ditch road, it's not opening up. So they opened the ditch up on.
On the other side.
They didn't open the ditch up on the other side. Now water is coming down and it's just overflowing, overflowing.
So you think opening up the other ditch too would, would that?
Well, uh, being that, uh, we are, aren't professionals in that area, I would like to say what I think is the well. But I would like for someone to properly assess that and find a solution. Otherwise we'll be back in this position again.
So it sounds like it just washed all that, a lot of that work anyway away again. Well, and let me, and let me say this, anytime you smell what you think is a sewage leak or break or anything that worries you. Just like if you smell a gas leak, always call the water and sewer company and alert them to it. They're legally required to come out and investigate any kind of sewage leak like that. So, um, if you haven't already, if you hadn't already done that, you know, in the future or even now, if it's still going on. You know, please alert the water and sewer company, because that's just like a gas leak. They're required to go out immediately, um, and try to, to address it. So I just.
So depending on the answer, depends on what I say, but has, does anyone know if Ken Wileman has gone over there and looked at it and done any type of evaluation? Cause that would be my first person that I would think to have go over there and give some sort of assessment to what they think maybe needed.
And this, and this business, actually I told them about it, you know, and I just feel like this, you know, it ain't my priority. But this, 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 you know, they losing property and I, I got pictures here. And if I, and I told you, constantly asking you, when you gonna go back there? It's that right down the street is Rosenbach, same situation. You, you, you don't go back there often though.
Uh, I go back there a, a lot. I, I would, I would, I would, I would say, suggest of, of all the people on this list. Few people have been as responsive to your particular problem as I have. But I hear you, I understand and I agree with you. And, and if it's sloughing off again, and it's just doing the same thing all over again. Then, uh, then yeah, I think it's a good idea to get somebody smarter up there. I mean, I'm, it's not my expertise either. So what we have to do is get people up there that, that do, do know. Um, I think opening up that other ditch is a good suggestion. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Wallen, I was told by Mr. Ross, when I was, he, he actually took me back there the first time. To show it to me, uh, not long after I became mayor, to explain to me pretty much everything you just said. Uh, and it's my understanding that he had, he had, you know, required with Mr. Kent, with, with our civil engineer. To go back there and look at, then address the problem. And so that's when I first became aware of it, when Jack Ross took me back there and showed me not long after I became mayor. So there's no question in what you're saying tonight is absolutely true, as far as I know. Uh, I'm not an expert either, so maybe the best next step. First of all, if you have sewer leak and this goes for anybody watching, always call water and sewer company. That's, that's their job. First of all, if you have sewer leak, and this goes for anybody watching, always call water and sewer company. That's that's their job. Secondly, uh I think it's a good suggestion, if we can, we'll try to get Mr. Wallen, if the council agrees with that. Uh out there to look says and assess the situation and see. Uh if he can maybe put together a proposal for us. And our water tank is not too far from there either. Um our west tank, so uh it could be something that could be done in conjunction with some work I've already asked him to look at up there. Not too far away, so. It all kind of works together, and if the school would. If the school would cooperate with that, Mr. Valley, I think we could come together and solve this problem. Uh for once and for all. I do think it's going to require the school to participate, because you're going to continue to have this onrush of water. Um until that's mitigated, to the original source of the problem is mitigated, everything else is just going to be addressing the symptoms. So you gotta address the original problem. So it would be great, very helpful if the school district would be a partner in this. And work with the city, Mr. Etherwick.
I I I don't, I kind of don't see it the way everybody's following the discussion. We've had, I've been having conversation with the city attorney. I think it's the school district's problem. When they, if they alter to land, the land that causes causes it to flow in that direction, they are liable. And the city and the private li- landowners can be damaged by that. And for the private landowners, it can be, it can be what's called an inverse condemnation, a taking of their property because they damaged it in such. So when you say if they were partner, they can be made to partner. I mean, it's a courthouse across the street.
That's what I'm looking at.
I would make them participate. I wouldn't ask them. I would tell them, you need to fix this problem, you call them. And so I I I think before we start paying money to have Ken go out and and do an assessment. We should demand that the school district come out and address that problem, and they should pay for it. And if they won't. And we use it building across the street too.
Mr. Raider state stated that. There's a ditch in front of his house. That has grown up or is not, and it's not, if it's the city's ditch and it's causing water to back up. Couldn't that part it because it's not flowing, you know, you know how you have a flow? If it's causing it to stay and wants to go. The water was initially supposed to flow this way, but because the ditch has grown up and the water can't flow, it flows this way. So that's part of the city too, right?
I mean.
I know what you're saying about.
Keeping our ditches and and and, you know, other infrastructure clean is is what we have to do no matter what. I'm just saying, but if it was created for water flow to go in a certain area, and then it's been altered by. Use of its own land, then they're responsible for everything that happens after. Now, yeah, we gotta keep it clean. We gotta keep it clean. But it sounds like it doesn't matter clean or not. It's rushing down the hill. I mean, water erodes. You know, land. And so there's nothing that you, we can ever do that's gonna ever change the problem as long as the water's coming down. So the district needs to fix the water flow issue since they created. I mean, it's not something that the city created. It's not something that the private landowners created. The district needs to fix it. And uh, you know. You can make them do it. You know, you don't have to ask.
This is is saying is both the city and the landowners are being damaged. As well as the right of way for your utilities, because if they're being exposed based to this rapid erosion. There's a problem for everybody.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and I didn't think about that. I don't mean to cut you off, but it's not just the city. It's not the private landowners. It's also if the gas line is exposed. If they got private utilities. The the district is at the mercy of everybody at this point. If if they cause the problem. You, everybody can put pressure on them to to fix the problem.
Good point. Other other members of the council?
So we'll be sending the district a letter. So Mrs. Raider, Mrs. Covington, you can have some kind of resolution about what 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 is our next? The next step we we're taking in this. So they need to be contacting which which way we're going, because if if it stops here tonight. You know, so are are the are the city attorney gonna get a letter to the school district on behalf of uh Mrs. Mr. Mrs. Raider?
I would, on behalf of the city.
Right, I would do is is reach out to the school district uh tomorrow relating to this this matter. Uh so that we can try to do something. Eventually, we're gonna have to reach out to Mr. Wileman as well relating to it, because. I don't know what the damages are at this point for the city. Even. Uh they're independent of city, they're citizens of the city, but city has its own interests as well. And I'm not trying to make light of the interest of the Raiders. Uh but the the issue that I'm saying is the city is being damaged as well. The city spent money repairing it. And it's washed away, it's coming away so fast. But they need to do something on their property to try to stop. Uh the rapid flow of water from that hill down, and it's uh. The people on the street need relief, not just them, but anybody else on the street, does the city's ditch. If if it's growing so fast, it's exposing pipes that are buried below ground, uh that's a major problem. And if if we as a city have already fixed it and that's been washed out, that's a major problem. And that's something that the districts need to do now versus later. Yes.
So so who could attack the Raiders unless they do what school does? So they are the. What's that we're taking then? The issues you're taking? Will you contact them as well or will city?
I'm gonna contact the the s- school district and copy the Raiders according to this this letter five thirty-three word street.
So it sounds like, uh if I'm hearing everybody correctly, the city attorney is gonna send a letter to the school district?
Yes.
Um to start process of of working with the school district, see if they will read and mitigate this problem and solve it for all parties involved, including y'all.
In a month, can we put this back on the agenda just to re revisit it until we get to to they get notified of what's going on? Well, huh, next two weeks, actually. What what the school district response was, right?
Well, I I would go another step and ask Mr. Valley if it's possible for him to copy. As many of the parties that you have the information on with the letter, so that you at least see that, any any response that we get. It it's a legal issue, it sounds like at this point, so it probably ought to be documented, and it probably ought to be done, you know. In other words, Mr. Valley needs to to sort of run with this ball, so you know, can you keep them in your in the loop as far as the legal proceedings and the next steps? But the next step, it sounds like, will be a letter from the city attorney on behalf of the city to the school district, asking them to. Well, I'm not gonna put words in your mouth. What do you want us, what do you want us to?
They probably ought to retain engineers to look at the drainage so they can fix the issue properly. Uh because on one hand. The city could pay for most of most of Wileman to do it, but it's probably more prudent for them to pay, because they have the issue on their property that needs to be corrected. But we need to address the issue sooner rather than later, if it's washing everything else. Also, I would need from the clerk and from the mayor's office, our damages that that the city has already paid. And that that's been washed out, because we have to look at repairing that again, and we need that cost reimbursed. And I don't, as as relates to that.
Do you do you have any questions of us, or you think you want to say?
Uh anything that it's moved forward and how we can assist in moving forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. Covington, Ms. Covington. I'm sorry. This is Mr. Rider, and what's your last name? I'm sorry.
Covington.
I said Miss Covington.
You said Miss.
I said Miss Covington. Thank you, Miss Covington. Thank you all very much for your patience. If there is no objection, I'm gonna ask the Johnsons or specifically Ms. Rebecca Johnson, if you wanna come up, state your name and. Uh and and if there's no objection, we'll move you up the agenda as Ms. Crockett suggested. And uh then Ms. Ford will will try to address yours if you want. The council. Thank you for your patience.
Hello, everyone. How y'all going tonight? Okay, my name is Rebecca Johnson, and I'm here tonight because. I'm planning on opening up a restaurant downtown. It's on Cherry Street, uh right there at Cherry and M Street. Uh and basically, uh I'm featuring barbecue. So the issue I'm running into right now is. Uh normally, when you do a barbecue, you have a smokehouse. Well, I don't have anywhere to build a smokehouse or to put anything anywhere, so. I do have a mobile grill. So I have a grill on a trailer. Um that I normally, when I go catering, I normally take that with me. And I can smoke my meat on that grill and do everything I need to do on the grill. Um so that's why I'm here tonight, because um I'm asking for two of the parking spots. And this is going to be on the north side of M Street, so not on Cherry Street, but on the north side of M Street. They are apparently. Now, I do apologize, because I I took pictures, but I forgot to print them off. So I do have a picture if anyone. Don't really know what where I'm talking about. I think it was the old JCPenney's building. Yeah, I know, okay, right on that side. That's. And, yeah, my trailer will park over there, and there I will be able to smoke my meat and. You know, and hopefully, um also I'll get the health department to come in, and they will be asking questions also about. I would need a letter, of course, I would need a letter of approval from the city saying that, yes, I'm I'm allowed to do that. And on those lots.
So JCPenney's uh. Is where you want to put your trailer, and you're asking the city council to approve the allocation of two of those parking spaces. For the use of the the food truck?
Exactly.
And that would be every day or? What about if you move the truck? What about the parking spaces then?
Well, I was hoping they can be reserved for that purpose, but if I move the truck. Uh I just hope if it's a reserve that they will respect that. I was even thinking about maybe even putting some orange cones or something there. Uh but um, I mean, I'm cooking every day, so. It's like five A M, six A M, so no one is. They normally business hours are eight, eight thirty in that area, so. Most likely, I wouldn't have that issue as far as someone, you know.
Have you had a chance to talk to Partners Bank about, or any of the other retailers?
Well, because, well, I've talked with Dr. Brian and that's who I'm based in the building from, and he explained to me that was first come, first served. Uh I don't really, part of bank have their own parking on the hill.
No, they don't. Nobody owns parking except the city, but just they use, I mean, customers use it, so.
Yeah.
To Dr. Brian.
I do. But I would, I would think, me being the the business there, I would have some. I would be also my, you know, a priority as far as trying to operate the business, the day-to-day business to have.
Those are my questions, uh questions for members of the council. Just correctly.
We don't, do we have to drop anything?
Mrs. was asking me questions. My, we had the question, we had the question, all along the sideline. Uh Mrs. was asking the question was about shouldn't this be referred to the planning commission before it comes back up to this body? And so the answer to Mr. asking this question is yes, planning commission has to look at it first. Planning commission is currently looking at what to do with food trucks and et cetera. She's not asking about a food truck, because she has a food truck, but she's asking specifically about the grill. And the question that she's asking about is about the use of the city's, the city's lots, the city streets. It's kind of like, one of the things that people always try to kind of judge about, he has a space right out there that says he is, but it's not. It's cities. The city owns the the street, and so he has a reserve sign out there, but it's not legal, because you all hadn't approved it. And so the issue that that she would have is the planning commission will probably need to address the issue first. Then y'all address it, because she they have to address it not just for her, but they have to address it for everybody, because if you're gonna start granting this. We can't look at her as an island by herself, and that's what the larger issue is. But I think that the planning commission uh. Could do it, it depends on what uh what parameters she's looking at. Because what she was saying earlier is that she wanted to start at like five in the morning. There's nobody gonna be down down at five o'clock in the morning. I don't know how long she would be cooking down there, et cetera. And so what what I would advise her, she needs a full plan as to when she's gonna use it, and then do a petition with the planning commission, get them to approve it. And then this body approve it. Uh the planning commission meets, Miss Havard, when does the planning commission meet? Second Wednesday tomorrow. Uh we can put her on the agenda, and then. At next meeting, she could be back on this agenda. The second Wednesday in in August is. Ma'am?
The ten.
Until she made with the planning commission, there wouldn't be anything prohibiting her from, if she first come, first served. She got down there at five o'clock in the morning, no one else was there currently, it wouldn't be anything to stop her from doing it.
There's nothing that that I've seen on the planning commission's standpoint. Listen, because that's her, even if it was a food truck, she could park it there, because it's in a commercial area, it's in a parking space. And she could sit there and operate it as as a food truck, long she has department of health and everyone else's permission. And so she probably could use it for those purposes. She's talking about permanently using it and making sure you do that. That's why I was saying, but there's nothing if the rest of us went open, and she wants to do it temporarily, I don't see anything blocking her. Because she can come down right now and put a food truck there and sell food any day of the week. A road roadkill grill used to sell right on Cherry Street, and others used to sell right on Cherry Street, so that's not the large issue. What she's asking about is some of a permanent sort of arrangement, because she's trying to, she doesn't have room in the back of her building. Uh to put the smokehouse, and so she's actually have something permanently there on that, on that, in that place. Uh basically, to use those those, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but it's.
Well, that was my original plan. Uh but I don't, I mean, I, if the planning commission can do that, that would be great. But basically, what I need is just to to be able to park there, and I guess I want it to be reserved, so just in case. I mean, that I won't get no backlash from, I'm new on the block, okay, so people been parked near all this time. And so basically, I just, I just need to know if the city is okay with me. I actually need to be reserved, and then also because the health department. I know when when I applied for my food truck license, they wanted, uh, excuse me, they wanted uh. A letter from the the city, the water company, to say where I can dispose my water, whatever, so I'm just. I'm trying to open like in the next thirty days, so I don't want any, you know, if if the health department need a letter, I won't already have that letter for them.
The other thing that having brought up that they approved the loan of ordinance for food trucks. And we haven't put it on this council's agenda, so we need to get that to your. The planning commission did, they did that, uh, what's happened when they do that, it was. It's last meeting, that's when they approved the food truck. By June, and so. No, 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 they they were saying all the requirements for a food truck within the city limits. Uh that's an ordinance that I did get you all before the next council meeting. Because when Ms. Johnson mentioned the disposal of water, the gray water.
Yeah.
Things all addressed in the ordinance as to uh food trucks and their responsibilities. We spent such a long time talking about one particular food truck, because they were trying to get it moved to another area that. I forgot to to give you all the update, the ordinance that I drafted, but I have it to you next week to have on agenda. But temporarily, as relates to uh. The the food trucks are allowed to be in commercial areas and to operate in commercial areas. There's no issue with it being on us, on the on the street as long as they comply with department of health. And this disposal of the water, disposal of the grease, and Ms. Johnson's aware of those issues from the department of health. And in the ordinance that's going to be adopted, there's there's issues about disposal of water, the grease, how you properly do so, and where they could be located. Uh the issue she's asking for is a very specific one, it's about. That the permanency of the location there for those two or three spaces. The planning commission will have to prove that, and this body will have to prove that.
Okay, well, so my next step would be.
Next step would go to the planning commission. The planning commission will have two parts, because they would have you to. Uh they would have to, unless they had a special call meeting to have a, you'd have to have a public hearing. Uh, they would have to, unless they had a special call meeting to have a, you'd have to have a public hearing before them. It has to be published in the paper. And et cetera. And that's at a separate meeting. So if you're trying to get open before then, uh, when you come Wednesday. Uh, you guys will think about uh, the. When you actually have a special call, planning commission meeting, so that they can approve it before the council comes. Because they have to refer up and the council has to prove thereafter. Now, there's no guarantee that they will approve, there's no guarantee this body will approve. That's a risk that takes, as relates to. And it's, it's, you have to pay the publicity in the paper and get people noticed the right to come in and object at a public hearing as to what you're doing. And what you're trying to do. And so it's, it's two-part process. It's that process, but that process is two parts. Do you have the regular meeting? Then you have the public hearing with the meeting immediately after the public hearing, to, to either vote it up or vote it down. If they vote in the affirmative, it comes up to this body and this body has to decide whether they're going to approve it. But I can, I can leave you and give you greater detail about that.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. Thank you guys.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson. And I think I speak for everybody when I said we can't wait till you open. And we can't wait to get that barbecue. We need a good barbecue place. And we're, we're very happy with what you're doing. Downtown Hana and it's desperately needed. And wish you all the, all the luck. And you'll probably see a lot of, just say may unfortunately, for a lot uh, when you open. And uh, and, and thank you, and thank you, thank you for coming. And thank you for your presence. What, what type of restaurant are you opening? Now you're, now you're just making us hungry. Thank you after Kevin. We appreciate it. And thank you for your patience and um, we appreciate it. Uh, um, the next time that I hear is, is the animal shelter and the cameras.
That's how, that's how I do with, with Chris Frank's table, so.
Um, actually, I'm sorry, Ms. Ford. Ms. Ford brought her, our attention and issue about. Uh, brought to my attention, an issue about raccoons on Miller Street. And it's not on the agenda, so it's, I'm gonna let y'all decide if you want it on Miller Street. So it's up to your colleagues if they're willing to take it up again, as far as I'm concerned. Go ahead. Is, is there any objection to bring it up? Okay, Ms. Ford?
If we, if there's someone that does animal control, part-time, occasionally, or whatever, um. They were described to me as big as dogs. Um, someone is feeding them. We know the school is going to start and that is a corner where a bus stop is. When I got home about five fifteen, I had someone calling me, then if they were on, it was four of them together. Uh, running in packs, they were on Beach Street. So they're coming in neighborhood, there is a building and I, I have some of the pictures of a abandoned building. Or a building that's been burnt out, house, it's been burnt out. Right behind this man's house. Um, and it, 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 not only, I mean, it's a health hazard. Uh, these people are afraid of these things. Um, and we have the best strand traffic in that area. And how, can, how can we assist them that is available to us?
That area, I mean, they, they hide out in the, the drainage, the. On, on the corners. They all, you know, when you're driving down the street and they see some car lights, they'll just duck down. I don't know if they live down there or they're just hiding. But they go there.
Yeah. I remember they said there was someone that's feeding them, that they can cause them out and uh, that he feeds them.
So the one issue, one issue you would have, I think that the city. The city can contract with any entity to do something that it uh, has the powers to do. City has the power to eradicate uh, vagrants as well as uh. Any of the animals that would cause an, any issue. Uh, you may have to contract, the city may have to contract with someone. That had, with their wildlife division to come in rescue. Their, their contracts for is uh. Terminics and uh, ork and et cetera, where they have wildlife division where they come and remove raccoons, snakes and those types of things. From certain areas. Uh, but I don't know what other wildlife agency you would have. But what they do is come and capture them and take them to an area and release them in the wild in some other city. Uh, but uh, they are a problem, not just on Miller Street, but on Miller Streets. And I'm not trying to make light of Mil- uh, Miller Street. But they are a problem and they're a problem with uh, they would eventually try to go to get into people's houses and, and et cetera.
And the people moved out and he can't rent his property because they were getting all in the attic and, you know, things like that.
Well, there are a couple answers to, to your question. One is, police department has been going to trainings. For animal control for dogs and cats though, not for wild animals. Um, however, in, in a, I am aware the fire department in the past has uh. Deployed traps for raccoons and things like that. And I generally take them up into the forest or down the river park even. And release them to get them away from that area. I know a lot of private land owner or property owners who, who do the same thing, you know, you get. Basically, you get traps and you trap them and then you, then you move them. Um, game fish commission is over that as far as the regulation of it. But that's generally how these problems are resolved is, is somebody traps them, as was already alluded to, and they're moved. Um, and so that I, if I recall, the fire department has done some of that. So.
Old gentleman, he was exhausted. He had called the police department and they, they sent him somewhere else. And he eventually called the fire department. They told him that when nobody in there, uh, and so he, he just, he doesn't know what to do.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, the police department was right. They were, they're not trying to, in wild animal and that, that's not part of their duties. They are being trained um, on animal control for, for dogs and cats.
There are new water persons that, that he had some license and, and then he say an animal.
I heard that, yeah. That's right. And if we had a proper animal control division, they would be trying licenses while animal removal. Um, and we've done it before. We had a raccoon in a funeral home, I think, because. That was quite a, a dramatic thing uh, one time. But uh, my guess is it did have the person at the fire department, they, he normally deals with that. I know they have in the past. I don't know if they still do. I haven't, it's the first time I've had a wild animal thing brought to my attention in a while. But if you want, if you want to, I'll, I'll follow up on it for you.
Like I said, they're running in packs, they're four and five of them together.
Yeah. Sure, no problem. All right. Anything else for sport on that?
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ford. Um, so we're, we're, I'm trying to watch the clock here. And I'm, I'm going to combine a couple of things just in the interest of time. We're down to three, three items, but really, we don't have. Um, an updated invoice for pumps, for Zon, for new pump purchase. So we can discuss it, but we don't have anything to do on it because we never got the updated uh, invoices or, or estimates for that. Um, there's a three hundred thousand dollar bill owed Zion Water Solutions. Uh, also in your packet is a ninety, uh, well, it's eighty to ninety thousand, depending on how many bells and whistles you get. For an animal shelter. Uh, I put that on our bid, which is our bidding platform to bid out projects. And went out to three hundred and something vendors. Uh, we had, I think, from memory, eleven people look at it. Um, we've had, I was asked to, by several people that know about these things, to go to this website. And they sent us a bid that's in your packet. Uh, and I also asked, uh, just verbally asked somebody. Locally who, uh, in construction, if they're being, be interested. They said they would be, but I never to get, get a bid from them. So the bid in your packet is the only bid we've actually received. Um, for the animal shelter that y'all, y'all approved in preparation for. This would be the actual uh, purchase of it. And uh, fifty thousand that would come from this little pet foundation. Um, the Zon bill, that is for the bypass pumps. The question is not so much whether, uh, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong. Somebody, it's not so much the authority to pay it as the ability to pay it. The ARPA money, uh, the one point, one million, six sixty thousand, to be precise, that we received. This week, um, I'm, I'm told by our treasurer and others that. Provided it's used for government services, the council has the authority to appropriate that money for the water department to pay our bills, including the Zon bill. Um, and to pay the city back for the funds that it has uh. Uh, allow the water department to borrow, that would then allow the city to pay all of its bills. So you have the ability tonight uh, to appropriate the money to pay these bills and to catch the city up with the ARPA funds. Provided they're for government services and they're all for government services. Uh, so you. Thanks to the federal government, thanks to the infusion of cash that we received this week, uh, and the R C S O Minister, Lake County Ministers that. Uh, the city has the opportunity to get completely caught up on its bills, including uh, Zon. And then we will still have enough to pay for new pumps so that we don't have to rent these pumps anymore. The, when I was looking back over the ARPA money we got last year. Uh, it was one of the things that, that was later unappropriated. So we had this discussion and we're just asking them to update their invoices for these pumps. Uh, what I'm asking you to do is to uh, to pay the city's bills off. It would be really simple. All you have to do is appropriate that money for the water service department to pay off existing bills. Uh, including and especially to the city of downtown West Town's general fund and related accounts. Uh, so that the city can then catch up on its bills. You have the authority and we have the money to do that tonight. Um, but you would have to appropriate it. And if you'll remember, we, we agreed to appropriate it for water service department a long time ago. Um, so I, I would ask you to do that tonight so that we can pay the Zon bill and the other issues. Ms. Crockett.
That. How many people do it take to uh, to, how many signatures does it take? For a check from the city to be approved? Okay, so on this excavator, because this was with the water coming too. It's been paid off. So some, yeah, two people signed a check.
I proved electronic payment of it and that's.
Is that legal, Miss Sandra?
The city.
Wait, wait, wait. I'm gonna, let me ask my question. Wait, 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 wait. Stop. Wait, wait, ma'am. Let me finish asking my question, please.
Well, I'm trying to answer you. I'm trying to answer your question. Your, your question was. Uh, did you have two signatures on the excavator check? The answer is no. One, the check was an electronic transaction. That I approved so that we could avoid it being repo'd, which would prevent the city from leasing equipment for the next five, seven years. The question on the table is, do you want to appropriate this ARPA money to pay the city's bills or not? It's real, now, Ms. Crockett, it's very simple.
Question, so I allowed you to ask.
And I, and I answered your question, but the question I asked you was whether you're, whether you.
I want to know how, uh, my question is. If you can electronically approve a check with just your one electronic signature. It does not make sense that we appropriate anything because if we don't appropriate it, you going to do your one check. I want to ask the city attorney, is that legal to do an electronic check when it's clearly stated it takes. Two signatures to approve a payment. I want to know what made you think that you could do that?
Who are you asking?
I'm asking you what made you think that you could appro- appro- I understand that you're saying that it was in the repo or whatever. But see, it's some lies being told because you told us that you had already paid for the excavator. Excuse, whatever the thing is, that you stated that it had been paid for because you had already pre-ordered it and then you paid. The money down and then you paid another payment off. Now you're saying. That it was in the process of being repossessed because you told us that it had been paid and it couldn't be sent back. So make it make sense.
Well, I, I will. Ms. Crockett, I never said it was paid.
Yes, you did.
No, I didn't.
Yes, you did.
You won't find anything that says that.
I know, but you're right what you want.
Ms. Crockett, no, ma'am, this is, this is all made public. It's on YouTube, it's on our website. Uh, it's covered by everybody. You won't find any record of me saying that we paid for the excavator. What I did say is that we ordered it legally and bound the city to pay it in cash. If we don't acknowledge or recognize or honor the finance agreement. You also appropriated it, authorized it, suspended the rules to approve the bid for it. And I ordered it the next day and I presented that documentation. Let me finish answering your question. That's what I said. You just misrepresented what I said. I never.
Misrepresenting what you.
No, ma'am. Ms. Crockett.
Saying that in one.
Do you want to pay the, the bills for the city or not? Yes, or no? Ms. Crockett, yes or no? The people need to know if you're willing to pay the city's bills.
Yeah, I'm going to pay the city's bill, but I won't choose to be irresponsible for the things that you're doing. You know, you, you run around here, you tell people that we're one hundred percent against you, but you continually, continually. Misspend the citizens' money. I was elected to speak up for the money part of this. Yeah, I got five more people, but I'm speaking up for the people who elected Wanda. Not Ms. Ford, not Mr. Cyclone, you're not Ms. Davis, I'm Mr. Frank. You keep trying to bring it to the people like the city council is so against paying the city's bills. Paying uh, what we need that we have misappropriated. If you, you had Mr. Monday to come before this board and do a long draw that thing and my major.
I didn't have him.
And my, well, he said he did, so my major thing was. If you, when you were elected, you knew that you had a spending authority of only five thousand dollars. Since you've been here, you have misrepresented that in more ways than one. And you always make it, try to make it seem like that you didn't know you couldn't do it or you didn't think that that was wrong. But Ms. Rams, it said in that chair, when we went through the process of, about the excavator. It was told to us that the excavator had not been ordered. It was told to us that it had not in money, had not been spent on it. And my lie, Ms. Rams. Okay, but then you, now you're sitting there saying that you did it the next day. Man, that money sit in that hole for six months and when it was decided amongst the council. That it was, should be used to show appreciation to the uh, employees of the city. Then you come up and start doing all kinds of stuff, trying to make the public think that we don't want to do anything for the water company. We don't want to do that. To this day, Mr. Frank has been asking for the money that has been, that was spent during the disaster. I don't know if anybody else has gotten it, but I haven't received it. Every time somebody asks you to do that, you sit in that chair and told me. That when I asked you to do something one time to get a, another bid on something, you told me you didn't think that it, it needed to be uh. Getting another bid. So you didn't even go back to try to ask the people to redo the contract. You was going to go on what they said. You remember that?
You're saying a whole lot of things.
Uh, do you remember?
That you can't document.
Yeah, I can document that. No, 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 let me. See, you always try to do that and try to make people.
You're suing, you're suing me to pay you a five thousand dollar bonus when we can't pay the bills. Because they're not being appropriated.
Listen.
I'm asking you to appropriate this money.
Since you want to bring that up. The reason that I, I put myself in because you sit in that chair when Mr. Vala had, what's the man's name on paper? On the, on the, on the phone, the, the Nestle League man. You know what I'm talking about.
Justin.
Yeah, and you agree that you would go along with what we had a, a, a proposed. Then as soon as the meeting was over, you told Ms. Ramsen it, pay the other employees, but don't pay the city, don't. You got the checks that were for the uh, elected officials have been sitting on your desk now since May. Would you, because, wait, 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 wait.
Would you rather me pay you or pay our?
Wait, wait, no, don't try to use it. Like you telling, you trying to say that we don't want to use. You said that we told you that we would appropriate the money. You told us that you would appropriate the money to pay us. So your word is not bond. So don't try to make it seem like that we are trying to not do what we have said that we're going to do for the city. All you do is sit up and try to make people think that this. All you do is sit up and try to make people think that this council is the worst thing in the world. You have literally. John Smith is supposed to be whatever he's supposed to be. I have no clue what his job is. But whatever he's supposed to be, he has been going from house to house. Trying to solicit people to run against everybody on this council, the city treasurer, the city clerk, and the city attorney. I know for a fact, because he walked up to my nephew's house and asked him if they know anybody that can run against one of the property. And you need to ask him what, the town words that my nephew gave him. I don't think that the city pays anybody to go out soliciting people to run for office. I don't understand why you always try to holler and make it think, make the people think that it's the city council. If the people would open their eyes, listen to you double talk yourself. They will see that if only you would participate and do what you're asked to do, what you're legally bound to do. You wouldn't have this backlash from the city council. But every meeting that we come to, you've spent thousands of dollars that have not legally been appropriated. Now you try to come to us to try to make the city think, citizens of this city, think that we don't want to pay our bills. Because the money's here. You've been paying everything you want to without us. Why stop there? We have, we really don't have any right. What I'm sitting up doing is just blowing air because it doesn't make any sense. You've sit at the table before and told us, it does not make any difference if y'all vote on it or not, I'm gonna write the check. But as I've told Mr. Ramsen and I've told Mr. Turner and they can vouch. The city's check take two signatures. So if they're signing the checks that have not been legally appropriated or authorized, they're just as much trouble as you are. I don't understand why you wanted to make it seem like we are so against. Whenever you come to, once that man, Mr. Scroggins man came here, we actually for three, two consecutive meetings to bring it. When he finally came, all we wanted to do was meet him and know his qualifications. Once we meet him, he got what he wanted. He, we, the city has, well, I guess you have him in the morning, I don't know. Because you tried to make it seem like it's our fault that we don't, we didn't have a water manager. It's you trying to make it seem like it's our fault. We don't have a code enforcer. The water manager, we had a great water manager who had all the credentials. We had a great code enforcer who had all the credentials, but for some personal reasons, they are no longer here. It had nothing to do with their money. No one, neither one of those two were griping about pay. Because they knew that when they took the job, what the pay was. So don't make the citizens, and I'm saying this for Wanda. Don't make, try to make me look bad to make yourself look good. Because anybody that can see, that can hear, can understand. Mayor, it's six people at this table and seven with you. It's always you against us. It's never, if we said it's sky blue, you say it's red. It's never any cooperation. We have asked you for things over and over again. And if it's not anything that you're interested in, you never presented to, like I said, Mr. Franklin has been asking, I know for the last three months. For the expenditures for the water company during the disaster, the so-called disaster. That you said that you, uh, called a disaster when Mr. Valor, who is very knowledgeable in law. Told you that you couldn't do that, but you did it anyway. You spent whatever you wanted to. You went in there and bought what you wanted. You bought four wheelers and everything else. Without the approval of the council. But then you try to make it because we don't go along with what you want. Then you try to make it seem like, like you said, how, are you gonna, do y'all want to pay the city's bill? Yes, I want to pay them all, but I want to pay them legally. I don't want to have to wake up one morning, somebody knocking at that door and saying, Ms. Crockett, you need to come here because y'all appropriated their money in the wrong place. And now y'all going to jail. Cause I'm claustrophobic and I came to jail. All I'm asking is, would you please try to work with us, mayor? Please, that's all I'm asking. So that we will profit all citizens, not just the, the.
Ms. Crockett, you're the one suing me for a five thousand. I'm not suing, I'm not suing you. I'm not suing you or anybody else. You're suing me. So, so the, the whole, oh, you want the whole story, the whole.
Why am I suing you?
The whole story. Are you gonna let me answer you or are you gonna keep talking over me?
A breach of contract.
Are you gonna, are you gonna keep talking over me? The city council also agreed in that agreement to appropriate the money for water and sewer. It has yet to do so. Has it? I just asked you to do that so that we could pay the city's bills.
Okay.
That is the question for the council.
Okay, but then.
And all your, all your, all your, all your, all your loud talking and talking over aside. The question for the council is, do you want to use the ARPA money to appropriate that? So that it will be legal to pay the bills that we already are legally obligated to pay by law? That you've already approved. Are, are you, are you, are you willing tonight to appropriate the million dollars so that we can pay the bills that the city owes? Right now? That's the question.
Okay, let me ask you this. Are you willing to, uh, pay what you said that you were gonna pay? That when you said that you would, uh, pay, I mean, go along with the, uh, the amended. Uh, thing when we did the, uh, Christmas incentives? That you sit in that chair and agreed that you would pay what the attorney, what was written down on the attorney's thing?
If, if the city council will appropriate that money.
No.
For our sewer, as agreed, let me, you want me to answer the question? If the city council will appropriate the money, the ARPA money for. The water sewer company so the city can be paid back and the city and the water and sewer company can get caught up on its bills. And it was the appropriation of the ARPA money for this year to. The water sewer company, that was the agreement. If you do that and we paid our bills off, you have my word. I will honor that agreement regarding, regarding, regarding bonuses and I will. You're not letting me finish. You want, you want to interrupt me. You are, you have my word. That if you hold up your end of the bargain and you will appropriate that money to the water sewer company as you agreed. And we pay our city's bills, then I will do my part and re- and release the money for the council or elected officials. Bonuses and, and to make it clear, the bonuses for city employees came out of federal money. Elected officials were not eligible for that money. This money comes out of our general fund. Right now, we owe money to vendors. I cannot in good conscience, I cannot in good.
And I'm tired of sitting here waiting on you to get through. You've been spending money. I don't need no bonus. But the problem against me is this, you sit here at this table and this is what you do.
You have my answer.
Okay, okay, well, let me set this clear. Okay, you want to give us an ultimatum to do what you want us to do? But you have not did what you agreed to do before this game into play. So how can we take your word? Your word don't mean anything to me.
The council has appropriated. As it said it would in the agreement.
Okay, as you said in the agreement that you would, uh, uh, pay the, the city, I mean, the, uh. The elected officials and the, um, employees of the city, you did it the way you wanted it. Not the way that it was originally woke up. It was four thousand dollars here, a thousand dollars there. This would happen in November. It is now August. And as of today, we had a whole meeting about this. You sit in that chair, I agree to this. But you, you're not holding up your end of the ball, but now you're trying to hold. And I'm like, Mr. Franklin.
Let me ask you.
I, I, I want, I wanted to be clear. No, wait, 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 wait.
City's bill.
Wait, 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 wait. Wait, let me, let me, let me, let me, let me make this clear to you. It's not the five thousand dollars. That, uh, it's the. The part that gets me and the part that causes me the problem with you is because you think you can do what you want to do. But you want to get on a thing and say that I sued you. Yes, I did. Wanted to look close before I get there, but it was not. So much that I am in need there because I don't know if you know or not, but I got a doctor for a dog. I worked every day. I got a son that works every day, so it's not like I'm, my house paid for. My car and everything are paid for, so I'm not begging for no money. I'm just trying to make you at one point in time realize that you have to do what you say you gonna do to. And everybody, everything probably fall, fall in place. So don't make it seem like I'm begging for no money. I'm suing nobody because. I'm suing you because of a breach of contract.
So if, if you appropriate the money as agreed.
Now, you don't. I'm not, we ain't got no.
I told you, I, I, then, then you have to, you have to do your part. You, you also, you also have to do the part.
But your.
You also.
Your father has been.
Ms. Crockett.
It is now August.
Do you want me to spend your five thousand dollar bonus to pay the city's bills or to give to you? That's the bottom line.
See, you, you see, you got it all wrong because the money that you're talking about, my, the bonus for the city officials. The elected officials would not come out of that money. So don't try to make the citizen think you're spending.
That's exactly where it comes from.
No, it doesn't. You just said that the money that you're trying to pay the bills is for one million. Eighteen point six, one point six million dollars that's used for something else. So we can't get no money out of this. So don't sit there and lie, man.
Well, no, ma'am, you're, you're incorrect. Our bills are paid out mostly out of the general fund unless it's designated revenue. And the money would be paid to the water and sewer department as you agreed, when we agreed on the bonuses. And then the city water and public utilities commi- uh, board, or I'm sorry, y'all are the board for the water and sewer department. The water sewer department could then pay the city back what it owes the city. And with that money, the city can then pay its bills. And if the city's bills are paid, you, you have my word. I will make sure, I will make sure you get your bonus.
Well, I, I will.
But, but you have the opportunity to do that tonight and you're both, you're all saying you don't want to pay the city's bill and we have.
You won't even.
If I may.
But you're not making a motion to.
If, if I may. If I may, before y'all, before y'all leave. Ms. Crockett, you asked me a question about ten minutes ago about the legal death. I don't think it was legal for the mayor to pay it. Last meeting when we sit here and we discussed it, we discussed in detail. We didn't have a quorum. We discussed in detail the contract. The ordinance waiver compared to bidding was signed, was passed and adopted September twenty first, twenty twenty one. The mayor presented a document that he ordered it for a cash order on September twenty second, twenty twenty one. Uh, there was emails that were sent that showed that they didn't have a particular piece of equipment. Now, your wave of competitive bidding was only for a hundred and fifteen thousand. The contract that was ordered was done for a hundred and twenty five thousand the next day. Then, uh, it was supposed to be delivered November the thirtieth on a cash basis, but it was not. Uh, the council repealed in December of twenty twenty one. And the council did an ordinance repealing the, the order. The order that was subject to and discussed this time was done in February of this year and March of this year. Relating to a hundred and twenty five thousand on piece of equipment with financing, it showed a hundred and forty thousand. Now, the contract that was signed by the mayor was not signed by the city treasurer, city clerk, or by the city attorney. In fact, I believe would be flawed upon reviewing it since Friday. Because in that contract, the mayor even signed, given a legal opinion that he was the city attorney for the city. And that it was legal what had been done. He signed that section as well. Uh, and so I haven't reviewed it, hadn't signed it, but it was signed by the mayor. The city treasurer and the city clerk at the meeting Friday that did not have a quorum. Uh, stated that there was zero dollars appropriated for the excavator this year. Uh, still does zero dollars appropriated for the excavator this year. And the city clerk and city treasurer asked me for opinion as to whether they should pay it at that point. And the city treasurer, I told him I'd get back with this meeting. And before I got back with them to do it, the mayor has done an electronic check. Uh, the checks in the city. The law is saying that you can do a, a electronic check. However, it has to be based on an appropriation. And neither the city treasurer nor the city clerk, uh, have any documents showing that this money has been appropriated. I believe that it was valid for the city council to rescind the original. It was based on a contract for cash only. Uh, this is just like purchasing a car. If I go and try to purchase a car until I sign the documents, I have zero ownership interest in it. And the, do you do finance? And the financing, the section in there says city attorney has to apply and say that this, all of these steps will follow. I have to sign that to say that I, as legal representative for the city, have researched this and these things have been done. At the time that it was signed, the other issue was that. Uh, the mayor signed it knowing fully well that it had been repealed by then. It was appealed in December, it was signed in February and in March, two separate instruments. And it was for above the amount of this appropriated. Amount misappropriated again was a hundred and fifteen thousand. This was for a hundred and twenty five thousand with finance of a hundred and forty thousand. So it's above the appropriation, even if you say it was a valid appropriation. It's a broad vote appropriated, so it was invalid in that, in that sense. And so there was no authority for him to do a check on his own. Uh, I don't know if the, the, the city clerk or the city treasurer were going to sign. However, there was no authority other than the council coming back and appropriating it at this point. The issue with it, uh, as I said in the, in the Friday's meeting. Is it creates a conundrum for the city because they say that they probably believe that he has to apparent authority, actual authority. And the issue is, the city's gonna be sued about it. Whether, and, and, and our defense would be, as I said before, I've told the mayor, the city clerk, city treasurer, anytime there's a, a spending. That is not appropriated, it is an ultra virus act in the city's position. I represent the city. I represent all of you, all of your official capacity, but the city position would be that you're liable, not the city. Because the city council did not appropriate. There's zero appropriation for this excavator at this point. It was repealed properly last year, in my opinion, and it, there was nothing to authorize it to be done. Now, the issue was, the conundrum that the city had was a simple conundrum, but it's of the mayor's doing. And what I mean, Ms. Rams asked me Friday about, well, what about city's credit? What about other things? How do we protect ourselves? Well, the issue is, when, when the mayor signed it, he created that problem for the city as the city's chief executive officer, but it still didn't make it legal. That's, that's a factor that's going to happen, one way or other. Either you're gonna be sued and it gonna have the problem with, with bad credit. Or the issue is that you have to pay for it illegally. Now, the issue is, the city clerk and city treasurer would have to make a city every month as to whether they're gonna cut a check. And there's no appropriation. They cannot cut a check as long as there's no appropriation. You all hadn't appropriated anything. So there's a litany of reasons why I, city attorney would believe that this is not a legal transaction. And I would advise any of them, all of them, not to sign anything because it's not a legal transaction. I never applied that it was a legal transaction. I will not sign the documents saying that, that all the policies will follow. Uh, as I said, the document that I had, the copy that I had, it had the mayor's signature as the city attorney. Saying he had read everything that is legal and proper and et cetera, as I reviewed them o- over the weekend. Now, as it relates to it, I think that the, the situation, it is what it is at this point. Uh, the cat is out of the bag and there's no easy solution to it. And that is the issue. Now, as it relates to the other thing, I would advise both of you all to stop having this quick probe laden type discussion. I would tell all of y'all as elected officials, it may not be the mayor's intent, may not be yours intent. But the five thousand dollars that's appropriated for the, the elected officials, it cannot be a bargain to you for y'all to do anything. That would be extortion, that would be, uh, public corruption on behalf of, of both sides. So the two things need to be separated. Whatever is relating to the five thousand dollars, if the mayor's gonna pay it, then he's gonna pay it. If he's not gonna pay it, then he's not gonna pay it. There's a pending lawsuit. I want to apply further about that. We haven't been served on it. But the two discussions need to be separate relating to those things, uh, because it, 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 it smacks of public corruption and that's not, that's not anybody's.
Excuse me, Ms..
It's, it's not anybody's intent.
This, Mr. Valor, wait a minute. It's also, it's, no, Mr., no, I'm sorry. Personal. I, I know you are, I know, but according to Robert's Rules of Order, that, that, that's a, that's a very serious and personal accusation. I do not know, but, but about the discussion that we had.
But the issue, the issue is, if you're gonna appropriate it, discuss the appropriations separate from the five thousand dollars. They're two separate issues. That's all I'm saying. I would not want you all to co-mingle the two conversations. And that's what I'm saying. Now, the issue, there are major issues in water department that needs appropriation. Uh, but also, when you look at it, mayor, they have told you many times, get us the documents, get us the paperwork as to. What you spent during emergencies, give us all the paperwork and they want a fair look at it. They've also asked of, about how much you were behind for us, the appropriations. From the, from the sanitation fees with Franklin, if you can keep account at every meeting here, got up to seven hundred thousand. How much is it now? I don't know. But the other issue is, all of this has to be discussed. You all have a duty to make sure the utility runs. You'll have absolute duty, city council. Uh, the mayor has absolute duty to comply with, with the local, state and federal rules. As it relates to the sanitation, that sanitation department, the water department. Hopefully we can, uh, fix this issue and go forward. As I've filed the mayor and the city treasurer, city clerk privately. I think the best thing for the department to happen is for us to do a revenue bond to address all of these issues. Because the rental of the equipment is draining the city. Uh, the overtime that caused to, to deal with the rental equipment is draining the city. We need permanent fixes. And a prominent solution for all of it, and we need a plan to do it all as relates, as it relates to it all. And that's my comments relating to, to this. But it's council, I, I don't think that the council can stick their head in the sand and say, we're not gonna do anything. And I'm not saying the council's doing that. Uh, I think that all of you had to openly discuss all these issues, address them, get to the bottom line of, and let's move forward. Uh, because elsewise, we will be going back and forth by the same thing. Uh, because elsewise, we would be going back and forth by the same thing. Council blame mayor, mayor blame council, we come back and forth, mayor blame council, council get, gets defensive because they said, we're doing our part. But the bottom line is, what the citizens want for us to do. If for the mayor and the council to come to some type of resolution. Here all the expenditures that, that were spent during, during the, during the emergencies. Here all the money that's actually owed by the water chiller to the city. Here's what I need to do. Here's a plan that we have to fix A, B, C, N, D, E, F, G, all the way through Z. And here's how we're gonna do it. When you all are serious about it, just do that, and then we can move from this point, period.
Ms. Valor, thank you. Now, um. I wanna refer each, first of all, point out that we're over the, it's about eight thirty, which y'all wanted to quit at eight, is what I was told. Um, but we had a special call meeting on the emergency. That happened over a year ago, a year and a half ago, and we detailed, went over the expenses. I would refer you back to those reports and to that meeting. Um, it keeps getting referred to over and over again. Um, it's, 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 it's not, it's, it's got really very little at all, if anything, to do with this discussion. The, the point is, we have a legal obligation. When the water commissions were, uh, were closed. And, and, and the city council became the governing board for a public utility. It became your fiduciary responsibility to take care of the finances of this public utility. There are public utility laws. And those laws have to be obeyed. Federal and state, public safety, health and welfare laws. That go beyond the petty politics, or whatever you wanna call this, of the city council and the mayor or anybody else. I would implore you to take advantage of the million dollars that the federal government just laid in our lap. To pay the water and sewer utility bills that are owed. To, uh, do what you already did before you unappropriated it, which is to approve purchases of pumps. To replace the pumps that are bypassed, that are being leased. Uh, that was gonna be spent and was approved, just as the excavator was approved and appropriated legally by this body. It was ordered, it was, it was ordered, it was, it was ordered, it was.
Did you say that?
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
We unappropriated money for pumps.
Yes, ma'am. And, and that's in the record. And, and all I would do is, all I'm saying is, I refer you back to those minutes, to those actions. I am trying to focus on going forward for our, no, no, Mr. Franklin, no, you're not helping anybody. You're just talking over me. I'm asking you, imploring you. No, that's right, because you won't stop talking. We can't get anything done. We have, we have, we have about.
I'm not, I'm not gonna appropriate nothing for you to misappropriate. We had had a surplus, this, this. You're a liar. The city is dying right now because all the stuff that you're doing, the legal spending. And let me tell you something, for these citizens who believe that what you said, scream, Mr. Valor, let me get this out. Because I don't, I don't have to be here. I sit here and watch you misappropriate money, buy stuff that you don't supposed to buy. And look, the city attorney just said, just said that you, you electronically let a check go out, that you had no business doing. That you have no respect for the city treasurer or the city clerk. You have no respect for the city attorney or this body. So, I don't have to be here. I don't have to. You're so ignorant enough that you do stuff that makes no sense. You started taking the taxpayers' money, doing what you wanna do. I care less about a bonus. I care less about sitting at this table. I'm sick and tired of the sewer leaks. I'm sick and tired of all these leaks around the community. The first thing you do is try to bully somebody to get them to do what you wanna do. But you take care of your friends, people like Patrick Carter, that's got the city's equipment that he's using as his personal use. Let's talk about that. How you paying Frank Clarence five thousand dollars to cut the river park, but the Washington Street park look like crap? Let's talk about how you talk about the whole city council. It doesn't matter to me. The city looks bad. My street look bad. Everybody in the ci- ci- city, they will look bad. Because you know what? You're taking care of certain people. You take care of people that, that, like, like right now. Mr. Valor. City, city treasurer.
How long have you been here?
To be on KCLT. I didn't pay them.
How long have you been on this body?
See this money at a radio ad, am I lying? There's a contract that he is paying. Five thousand dollars to talk about us and city issues. That we did not sign a contract, but he has signed a five thousand dollar contract with KCLT, am I lying? Every, every, every Thursday, or whatever day when you go on.
We're paying another radio station right now.
But we didn't ask.
Right now.
That's you. That's you. And the truth be told is this, you're doing more than that. You're doing more than that. You say, you, you taking the city's money, using it for your purpose. Let's go back. He also paid thirty eight thousand dollars to have trees cut down on professional plant that does not belong to the city. Tell the truth, that you're spending taxpayer's dollars. Be quiet, because you're spending taxpayer's dollars and doing what you wanna do. Yes, because you're not being truthful to the city. That's why Sandy and Dave.
But yeah, you have no documentation.
Is there email, is there email showing that the mayor spent five thousand dollars, KCLT, for advertising?
But there's, there's not, there's, there's not something that you have to approve.
Is that true?
And you don't have to, you would have to approve it.
There's a bill that says the mayor has spent five thousand dollars in professional plants that have trees cut down. Am I right or wrong, Mr.?
Mr. Franklin. If you just gotta make political speeches, and you're, all you're doing is obstructing the work of the city. Now, you don't want any answers. All you wanna do is yell.
The city clerk.
Forty eight hundred.
That, that professional plant is not a part of the city's street. He just had that cut down because what you doing, just like Josh, he does not have a job title. He is human resource, but he goes around bidding on contracts, taking contracts around to do jobs for the city. He's, that's not his job. He's, you say he's human resource, well, y'all open up a procurement office so he can feed that. Stop lying to these citizens, because guess what? Just like you get loud, brother, I see that, I can get loud, and I got the truth. I have no reason not. City, city, city treasurer, the, the statements I just made are the, are the accurate and true. When I ask, when I say stuff at this speed, is it accurate and true? Have I lied about anything I brought up about the mayor spending? Am I truthful what I'm saying?
Except you can't. Except you can't demonstrate. It said, now, you don't want me to talk because you don't want the truth. You don't want the truth. You don't want the public to know the truth. If, if, no, 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 no.